Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the City Council Meeting of July 7, 2014. Would you stand with me for the pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The pledge will be to all council seats.
Councilmember Schwab?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Altav?
Here.
Councilmember Ellison?
Here.
And Mayor Hedges?
Here. Thank you. Item two is approval of the agenda and additions or corrections to the agenda tonight.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
And moved and seconded to approve the agenda as it is presented. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Approval of the minutes of previous meetings. We had a regular council meeting on June 16. Those minutes are in our packet. Any additions or corrections to those minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes of June 16 meeting.
I'll second.
And moved and seconded to approve the minutes of our June 16 meeting. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Then we have a special meeting, June 30. I have those in return packet also.
I move that we approve the meeting minutes of the June 30 meeting.
I will second.
And moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the June 30 meeting. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you. The accounts payable are in my packet also for review. Any additions, corrections, questions, concerns?
I'd like to motion to accept it, Councilmember.
I will second.
And moved and seconded to adopt the accounts payable as presented to us. For this, we need a vote. All.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Altav?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
And Mayor Hedges?
Yes. I have five citizen comments for items which do not appear on the agenda. So any citizen who would like to, please stand up and address the council. This would be the time to do that. And seeing none, let us move on to item six, old business. The first item is Strategic Goals Report, updates and so forth. Mr. Hout.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Under promote accomplishments, we published photos of the new kayak launch. Kayak launch is awesome. It's great. People are using it. And the Ellis to cleanup project as well, that was led by Chief Dupont. I'm in for an infiltration mitigation. Dan and Mark met with Brian Newhoff for a preliminary discussion about upgrading the equipment at the lift station. And recall that the issue here is that we know we need to upgrade, do some upgrades at the lift station. Between the lift station and the wastewater plant is the force main. We also know that we're going to have to replace that force main at some point in time. It's getting colder, maybe even just beyond its useable life. And so the discussion is whether or not it's more cost-effective or even makes more, just makes more sense to move the lift station closer to the wastewater treatment plant, eliminate that force main, to put in a gravity feed line there. So they're weighing those options for us. Had a discussion with Dan and Mark to get a little bit more information, and they're going to put together a cost analysis for us. Obviously, this would be a huge project, and I'm not going to come to the next council meeting and ask you to approve the project. I think we would have Brian Newhoff come in and sort of talk about the options either here at a workshop and really flush out all the questions that you might have after we've flushed out all the questions that I'm certainly going to have. But just wanted to get that on your radar screen. It is one of our goals for this year to at least tackle the lift station. And then also working back from the lift station back to the new King Milling line that went out to the railroad tracks. We've got to complete that as well. So we're looking at how we might install a new line there. Just to refresh your memory, when King Milling put in a new line, they upgraded the size from 15 inch to 18 inch, and the DEQ gave us a permit for that, but they said that we could not add any more customers to that portion of the system until we upgraded the line from the King Milling line to the lift station and increased the flow or the capacity there. So that's an outstanding project that needs to be completed. Anyway, going back to the strategic goals report, that's where we're at. I think we'll go into infiltration mitigation, community cleanup project I mentioned that was held on June 28, second one scheduled to be scheduled for July 29. And rental rehabilitation, we were recently informed by Kent County, I think I've mentioned this once, but that the end of our three-year cycle is actually in 2015. And that HUD asked us a year early to let them know whether or not we're going to continue to participate in the program. So the bad news is that may put our rehab off for another year. The good news is we've got CDPG money for another year, and probably would put that into a street project into the, in that CDPG area. We're limited in the area that we can use those CDPG funds, but we're looking at one like the priority project in that area. Down the drive is kind of coming to mind. So that's it on rental rehab. Downtown development plan, what I went on today, state quarter meetings are set for July 15 and August 26. You are certainly welcome to attend. We're inviting some of the other members of the boards and commissions, business owners, and various organizations. We, I think we sent out over a hundred letters today, and we really want to get a lot of input into the downtown development plan. So those meetings are July 15, August 26, right here, 7 to 19 p.m. And then Riverwalk State Showboat, the final plan was presented a year, June 16, council meeting, and that project is complete. So that's it on the strategic goals report.
Thank you. Item B, then, well, maybe I should, any questions or complaints about?
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead.
Just a question, because I had a couple people ask me, the kayak launch, was that the extra money out of last year's budget were coming out of this year's budget?
No, that was part of the project.
Well, it was extra. There was an extra $2,400 on that project.
Yes, that was coming out of last year's budget.
Okay, that's, that's all we wanted to know.
Any other questions concerning our strategic plan? Okay. Now, I'll move ahead. I'm sorry for being a little presumptuous and going too quick, but item B is a resolution or amendment for charter adjustments. Mr. Hout?
In going back, I apologize. I'm still not at 100% yet, and I'm closer to 100% today than I was when I was writing this description. And going back today and looking at the description, I realized that there were some things that wasn't, wasn't a very good description of what we're presenting to you. So I got up on the screen and I put in front of your spots what's on the screen as well. And it'll be with the red type on it. We have two resolutions before you. There is the original resolution that we were going to talk about at your last council meeting, and unfortunately, I couldn't be there, and I apologize for that. But then in the meantime, there was a suggestion on an alternative, and so we put that together in a resolution as well, so you could consider one of the two alternatives. And to backtrack, in November of last year, we went to voters and we asked them to approve a charter amendment that would have allowed, that would have, what I have on the screen, that would have amended Section A of Section 15.3 in the charter. And it would have, last year's amendment would have allowed contracts for the sale or lease of property beyond 10 years to be approved by the council. And that was rejected, and it was rejected fairly soundly. And so in talking with folks after the election about, well, you know, what were the concerns? Really, the big concern was the issue of the sale of property. And as we reviewed this section of the charter, this section really doesn't have anything to do with sale of property. And when we're talking about contracts, we would never have an agreement that would last beyond 10 years for the sale of property anyway. There's a separate section in the charter that deals with the sale of property, and I'm going to go over that in a moment. But the issue really was the lease of property. And we have, I can point to you one specific case, and I think that we may have others come up, where we would like to lease property for a period beyond 10 years and put improvements on that property, such as a parking lot. But it doesn't make sense to have a 10-year lease on property where the improvements might last 30, 40, 50 years. And so what you have before you in Resolution 1014, the other one is 1314, what you have before you on Resolution 1014 is to ask whether or not the voters would approve allowing the council to approve the lease of real estate for contracts that are beyond 10 years, but not for a term exceeding 50 years. And that was another issue that came up, was that 99 years seemed to be a fairly long time. And so we took the 50 years, because 50 years is, you know, certainly a little bit beyond the useful life of a parking lot or some infrastructure that we could put in. So that seemed to be to match up a little bit with what our goals are. Of course, you have a resolution before you, and resolutions are written by lawyers. And on top of that, you know, the language has to go to the Attorney General, and the Attorney General has to approve the language. And so in order to simplify things, what I did was pulled from the charter, this page that you have in front of you, to show you exactly, if you approve this to go to voters, and then if the voters approved it, well, actually, if you approve it, and then the Attorney General approves the language, and then the voters approve the language, then this is the actual change that would occur in the charter under Resolution 1014. And the same is the case on the flip side with Resolution 1314. Under this section of the charter, it, this section has limitations on contractual power of council. And there are four, five subsections, A, B, C, D, and E. A has to do with contracts, and that's the section that we're talking about. B has to do with purchase, selling, or disposing of real estate. And this is, this is the one, I'm going to go over this a little bit, because, you know, I want to, I want to be able to answer any question, but I also, I want to make sure people understand what the charter says with regard to the sale of property. That we can't sell property unless, first of all, there's true published advertisements. There is an affirmative for more members of the council, so it requires a super majority of the council to sell property. In the case of real estate that we own, remember, this was the case with a lease as well, the lease that we just did with the Yoda gesture, but also the property that we just purchased through the tank sale, and the school property. You have to approve it. It has to sit on file with the court for 20 days, and then you have to approve it again. And so it has to come to the council twice, and there has to be this waiting period. And then finally, number four is that it shall be in accordance with Section 512 of the charter. I didn't print that section, but that's the check, the section that talks about park land. And it says that if, if the city owns real estate and it's part of a master plan for parks, then you cannot sell it without going to the voters. And so that's, this is where it refers to that Section 512, and then it's explained more in Section 512. But that's on sale of property. We're not talking about the sale of property. We're talking about the lease of property. And so the resolution, the one resolution that's before you would add this language to the limits on contractual power of the council. And I'm not going to read the whole thing, but it basically says that the council is limited to contracts of 10 years with some exceptions. Those exceptions are contract for services with public utility, contract with one or more other governmental units, or contracts for debt service secured by bonds and notes, bonds and notes, so basically power of will. What we would add to that is contracts for the lease of real estate to or from the city, provided contracts for the lease to or from the city of the real estate shall not be for a term exceeding 50 years. So that's what Resolution 1014 would do. It would add the lease of property, not the sale of property, just the lease of property, and it limits it to 50 years. Now, this alternative resolution is somebody had mentioned, well, maybe on the lease of property, we ought to require a super majority of the council. And so that's what 13-14 does, is it makes that same change to the same section of the charter, same language up to 50 years, and then it says, and provided further, such leases where the term exceeding 10 years shall require the approval of at least four members of the city council. So those are the two resolutions for you. Again, as I, as I said, you've got a couple of options to choose from. We will, in order to have this on the ballot in November, we have to say the language to the county clerk by August 12. We do have to have approval from the Attorney General's office yet, and so that would take a few weeks. And so it sounds like we don't have much time left, but we don't have a lot of time left. But it is one of those issues where, you know, your comfort level is not real high with it, and we'll put it off, we'll put it off for next year. It just, it seemed that, you know, with the November statewide general election, it seems to be a good time to be asking voters, you get better turnout, and it seems to be a good time to be asking voters. But that's before, that's supposed to be for you.
Okay, if I understand this correctly, we have two resolutions being presented to us. We can pick one or the other.
Right.
And, or neither.
Or neither.
But not both.
But not both. And I think perhaps that your first discussion, I mean, if I were going to organize the discussion for you, it would be, you know, first of all, do you want to put the question before the voters? Are you comfortable with the lease of property up to 50 years? And that's, that's item number one. And then item number two is, then should that require a super majority of the council for, for those leases that are beyond 10 years, the 10 to 50 year period?
And that's what the second resolution, 1314, so the second provides, it has that super majority vote.
Correct.
I would, I would like to talk about this a little bit more, because it is getting put back up again, again to us, you know, without really getting to discuss it. I, I don't have any problems with a 50-year lease for a parking lot, but there still should be some language in there. I don't want to give somebody a 50-year lease on a building. And if you don't put that in there, it could happen. I'm not saying we're going to do it, but it could happen. And that's why there's only 10 in the leases, so that that can happen. I'm just not comf-, I'm all right doing that with a parking lot, but I'm not really, this is opening up still. We're sure we're not selling. We're going to give somebody a 50-year lease on a building, which could happen. You could be gone.
Daryl will be.
Yeah. But I'm just thinking about the future. I know that maybe some of you think that it doesn't matter, but I've talked to quite a few voters, and there's quite a few voters that really don't even want us to change nothing. You know, that's because there's not enough wording. Now, this is going to change it a little bit, but listen, so I still think we should, if we're going to do leases on buildings or anything like that, I think that people in the city alone should be involved in that. And it seems like we have an election every year, and sometimes three times, so I don't see any problem with letting them still be a little bit more involved about us leasing property or, you know, with buildings on. No buildings? A parking lot? Even 50 years is pushing it, you know? That's out there quite a ways. You know, that's two generations ago. So, but that's just my opinion, and I don't need one of five.
I like the 50 years. I think, you know, when you say a parking lot for 100 years, lot could happen in 99 years. So I think the 50 years is more reasonable. Doesn't mean every contract that we have has to be 50 years. Every contract will come to the council. I think your, your, some of your concern could be if we did the super major, sorry, some of Mr. Altav's concerns might be, you know, helped a little bit by the fact that if we have a super majority, then that would help, you know, I mean, it could just be a three to two vote. Every, you know, we'd need the four out of five. And so every contract that comes up would be considered. Are all of them worth 50 years? No. Are some of them? Yes. Would we like to be able to do that? I think last time it was at the elections. We kind of got a bad rap. I think people kind of blew it out of proportion and misunderstood. And I think by doing the super majority, that would help with a little bit with the trust issue on that. Getting more information out in advance might help people understand that we're not looking to rent every building for 50 years, or at least every property. But we would be able to do that if it was a good deal, and it was something that we were going to invest some of the taxpayer dollars in, like a very nice parking lot 10 years from now. Somebody could decide to sell the land and rip it up. But 50 years from now, I don't think would be such an issue. So I like the 50 years, and I do like the super majority. My opinion.
I think I'm on the chair inside of the.
Got your master.
I don't have to vote at this moment, so?
At this moment?
Nothing else.
Okay. Mr. Schwab?
I guess my thoughts revolve around identity of the city, and what's the city going to be? Is the city going to be sort of an old school, very close-knit group of people that everybody knows real well? And I think it makes sense to have 50-year contracts, because everyone's going to know each other. It's going to be the same group of people. If, however, the identity of the city is going to be more of a, more transitory, more change, new buildings coming in, new businesses, new ideas, I think it makes sense to stick with 10 years. I think it really comes down to what the city wants to be, and I believe we've talked about that here. I know that I've talked about it with others. And I think that's really, for me, that's at the heart of it. What does the city want to be? Where's it going to go?
Okay, thank you. My thought on the matter is that I would agree with 50 years. I think that's, that's good. I think that the super majority issue would help make sure that it's well-intended. And if we're going to get 100%, we should maybe be asking for that. But I do think more than just a simple three people asking it, that we could end up with a couple people going on vacation and seize the opportunity to make something happen. And so, or makes it a little more legitimate, a lot more legitimate, and would serve us well. I think for many of the things that we're looking for out there in the future, we know the government, the wheels grind slowly. And so things don't happen all that quickly most of the time. I think that with the institution of having other folks involved in our governmental process, through the DDA, through Planning Commission, through other levels of government, before it reaches the council, there are many other people that are also involved along the way as we plan our various properties and the direction of this community. So there's a lot of people involved in what happens. So I'm quite comfortable with this resolution 1314. That's the rationale I would all of my take. Thanks. Back around again. Councilmember Althoff, do you have anything else to add?
Well, that's basically all I have to say on that.
One more thing is with our strategic planning and our long-term planning, and we really put forth an effort to do that. I don't think 50 years is a long time, but for some things, it might be worth it. We're doing the downtown development plan, the Riverwalk plan, that's not going to happen overnight. I don't think 50 years would be unreasonable, I think. So keeping in mind that it's a possibility for 50 years, it isn't guaranteed every time we're going to ask for it. I think it's reasonable, so.
Any other thoughts, Mr. Hall?
No. I do like the idea, having this document changed. I think there was a time that somebody did want a 30-year lease, and that was impossible. And that kept funding away from other projects. I think some, I also think that if you're talking about a building, a building is nowadays is pretty much extinct in 40 years. So, I mean, with technology, you're basically, if you want to rehab a building, it's nearly impossible without putting more money into it than what you would have to do with it. So I think it's important that we look at.
Other thoughts, Mr. Schwab?
No, I know, I stand by what I said, I said before. I think, I think it really depends. I mean, I know what I'd like to see, but I think it also depends on the community, how it wants to approach it.
I don't know that we adopt Resolution 1314.
I'll support.
And moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 1314. And before we take the vote, except the other question or?
Well, maybe just, maybe just an additional comment. I don't know if that helps or hurts, but I'll throw it out there anyway, and not to, not to add to the debate book, to add information. It was commented to me maybe a year or so ago that, well, Boy Scouts used to have a 100-year lease on their building, and then, you know, the city reduced that to 10 years. And I said, really? I said, wouldn't have that happened? Well, it was a long time ago. I think it happened when the charter was implemented in 19, in the early 60s. But the, I think the Boy Scouts built that building, and we now, the city now owns it. And they, you know, that would be one, I think, that might come up, and maybe it would make sense for a longer term lease, maybe it wouldn't. This still, you know, puts that in the council's hands, and, you know, we still have the democratic process that if the citizens aren't happy with what the council is doing, if they're leasing a bunch of properties for 50 years, then maybe it would be time for a new council. I shouldn't be saying that, but that, that is the process. And so I guess, you know, the reason I'm pointing that out is there, there may be cases where it might make sense for a longer term lease on the building, but there are certainly cases where it does make sense. And that's where you put a certain amount of trust in the, in the people that have been elected to sit here and to make those decisions and make informed decisions. elected to sit here and to make those decisions and make informed decisions, because there are cases where it would make no sense to lease out a building or lease from somebody for a long period of time. But you have to, you do have to evaluate it case by case basis. Maybe that helps.
Okay. Thank you. And as a resolution, there will be a vote, all vote, and again, we need four votes for this to pass, so call for a vote.
Councilmember Schwab?
No.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Althaus?
No.
Councilmember Allison?
Yes.
Mayor Hages?
Yes.
So it fails a three to two vote, or you're wearing four. All right, thank you. Moving on then to item seven, Lowlight Power Board meeting dates for fiscal year fourteen fifteen.
This is following up on a process that apparently had been in place, that is now being put in place, the Light and Power Board has recommended following meeting dates for the fiscal year, and is asking for council approval.
I move that we approve the meeting dates as presented from the Lowlight Power Board.
I will second.
And with the second to adopt the, and support the meeting dates of Lowlight Power, all in favor? Yes. Any vote? Thank you. Item eight, council comments. I'm going to do something just a little bit different tonight, I'm going to go first. And the reason for that is I got a letter from a Chris Schwab indicating, and so I will announce it officially, "I have been offered and accepted a new position outside the state of Michigan. I will serve on the city council until July eight. I will attend the June thirty and July seven meetings. This email is intended to serve as my letter of resignation, July eight being my last day. I have been grateful to have been able to serve on the city council. And Chris, I want you to know that we sincerely appreciate all that you've done. You've been time here in our community as a pastor, as a very involved member of the community, the skate park, and all that, and I'm really going to miss you, and I'm glad that you were able to serve our city council in this capacity."
Thank you.
I would be remiss if I didn't mention some of my other duties, Light and Power has not met, Chamber of Commerce has not met, World Memorial Fund has not met, Riverwalk Weekend is coming up, so be part of that. So, anyway, those are my comments for tonight, and Chris, I'll let you go next.
Well, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, all those, and thank you for serving, and thank you giving me a chance to do this. It's been a pleasure. I wish you all well, I wish that process continued, that people continue to be open and listening on all sides to events that come up. Jim mentioned to me before that he'd be taking the skate park concerns, so, so we have a nice voice there for that. But on a serious note, just Godspeed to all, and all the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
Okay. Nice serving with you, been a pleasure. I won't miss you as much as I'll miss your wife. She's leaving the Planning Commission, that's going to be a tough one to fill. I do really love her. This one is... Anyway, we have the Planning Commission, we do have an opening now, so. That has to be filmed, and Flora meets tomorrow, maybe, so. Have seen the board report.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Althaus?
No boards met, but we did have quite a fireworks show the Fourth of July on the River. It was quite, quite fun, quite large. I don't know if there was any incidents in town, but who wasn't there. Lasted quite a long time, and there was a lot of people in town, so. And I'll miss you. We agreed and disagreed on a lot of stuff, and that's what it's supposed to be about, so good luck in your future. Thanks, thanks for being a friend.
The Historic District Commission did meet. We just discussed some signage issues and extending a project issue for someone, so very simple. None of the other boards have met, and I do want to miss Chris and Rachel, the best of luck in their new adventures, and we will miss both of you very much, you've been a wonderful part of our community, appreciate some of your kind words, some of the things that you've said are things I've thought, so, about everyone getting along and working together and, and being positive, so I appreciate that attitude, and hopefully we'll find someone else with that same attitude, but thank you for, for serving, and best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item was the City Manager's Report, item number nine.
Thank you. We held a meeting with all of the stakeholders on the wireless project to connect city buildings. Can you give me a snippet of some information about this, just wanted to keep you informed? What we're talking about is mostly the Shepherd, the tower at Shepherd Street, on the Shepherd Street Hill, and one of the things that we were, we've been able to do is to locate a, an old Nextel building. Nextel is getting rid of their buildings that are next to their towers, and basically they're giving them away, and all you have to do is pay the cost of transporting them, which still is going to be five, six, seven thousand dollars. These buildings are concrete structures, they're very, very solid structures, and the building that we located actually still has equipment racks in it, and is in very good shape, you would have to pour concrete pad to set, set it on. It would be larger than the shed that we have up there, it would eventually replace the shed that we have up there, and really improve that area for the residents who live up there, and also improve our capabilities to, to heat the equipment that is connected to the things that are on the tower, roaming free. We've been having roaming problems in current sheds, and so we're excited that that's moving forward. What that means in terms of the project is that we did receive grant money to pay for fifty percent of the cost of creating a wireless network with several city buildings in order to try to eliminate those internet connections at the various buildings and bring everybody under the same network. And so with some infrastructure improvements, we should be able to save some operating costs. If you have any questions about that, if you have any answer now, or if you have any later, please feel free to ask. We've secured bids and are looking at a new carrier for employee life insurance, should save us approximately three thousand dollars, so that a little bit helps, and we'll do that, same coverage, but just a new carrier. We're pulling together several contractors to submit bids to repair and replace the trim on City Hall, mostly on this west side, that, you know, the woodwork and some panels there are, not only is the paint peeled, but the water's getting in, the boards are starting to rot, and starting to look noticeably bad, and so we're pulling together some bids to probably have some of that work done, and we'll be asking the Historic District for matching funds for that project as well, so. The handicap accessibility path has been installed at Creekside Park, and so we're glad to have that project done and completed, and it's a wonderful improvement to Creekside Park. A few things that are not in my written report that kind of came in or have been coming in. We received from Regent Township a zoning water appeals public notice, and if any of you are interested in that, it has to do with a city river viewing railing process, things like that, at the new Bed and Breakfast, near the, where, where the old bridge crossed, and there, they, they need to get a variance for that structure because it's within the natural river area, or designated, naturally designated river area. So they sent us a notice, and if any council members, any members of the public are interested in attending that, or any comments, then let me know when I can get more information. We received a letter from our airport manager, Jim Scholes, who has served for many, many years as the airport manager, and he has tendered his resignation effective October one, twenty fourteen, so will be working through the process of looking for a new airport manager, and the surname is Jim, Jim has been very passionate about the airport, and I'm sure this isn't the last time that this will come up at the council meeting, but Jim's been, I believe, a very effective manager, certainly during the time that I've been here, he's been a wonderful workman. We received, this will be coming to a future council meeting, there is a deadline in August, deadline on it, but we received a amendment to the grant agreement with the state for the flood, for reimbursement for the flood, and the state, remember that we had a twenty-five percent match, and we reimbursed by FEMA for seventy-five percent of our costs. The state has approved matching half of our twenty-five percent, so twelve point five percent of the total cost, but we need to amend the grant agreement that we already had with them, in order to receive FEMA funds in order to receive that twelve point five percent, so that'll be coming as an agenda in the future council meeting, but I thought I'd at least announce it to you today, that it looks like the, the state has come up with some matching funds to assist communities that were harmed by the flood. I would like to thank our state representative, Lisa Postulus Lyons, and Senator Dave Hiltonbrand, I know that they were proponents of this, and worked through the legislature to identify the funding and to work with the governor's office to act this approved, so thank you very much to them for their efforts. And then finally, I left in front of you a June three email that I had sent out, and this is the hard copy I'd sent to you, like, you know, this is a hard copy of the sidewalk inspections, and it has the red and the yellow list, and it also has the deficiency criteria for the sidewalks, so I know I had gotten a request for that, Jim, and so I thought I would just print the whole thing and do the program. And last but not least, Councilmember Schwab, you have been an absolute delight to a point. You have brought just an intelligent discussion to, to this chamber. It's been an incredible honor and pleasure getting to know you, and I really, I hate to see you go. I think I might be a little bit with Jim Hall, but maybe not fully, and we will miss Rachel as well. She's been just wonderful on the Planning Commission, the two of you have contributed greatly to the community, and you'll be missed, and you'll be missed at City Hall, and personally, I would issue, it's been a pleasure, and I love you, so thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And that's all.
Thank you, moving on to?
Hang on, yes. We're all going to listen, no?
Well, he is lucky to be in there, so I understand that, that's without saying.
Yes, indeed.
I do.
Okay, appointments. There is a vacancy that I would like to fill this evening, the Frank Handfield vacancy on the Downtown Development Authority, and we were granted was a application from Fluke Gate of Mitch, and I'd like to propose that I fill that vacancy, if that's agreed with the council.
Yes.
Excellent.
Excellent.
Motion to pre-approve. Motion to pre-approve.
We confer the recommendation out there.
I'll second.
Both in second, all those in favor?
Yes.
Any vote? Thank you. No? We have vacancies still on the Historic District Commission, as well as the Planning Commission, and the city council vacancy will be advertised, and we will be accepting applications for the city council position through noon Friday at July twenty-five, and the reason for that is that the city charter does state that we need to fill the vacancy within thirty days of the vacancy, so we have till August eighth, and so we would hope to do that in the near future, but after the applications are due at noon Friday, July twenty-five, and with that.
I move that we go into close, we don't have a closed session?
No, I have a long debate, and we have no strategy issues to discuss.
In that case, I move the meeting adjourned at seven forty-five.
I will second.
And we'll in second the adjourned. All in favor?
Yes.